Let's start the June 12th Planning Commission meeting. Late start. This is the tick edition of the Planning Commission. So, we're gonna be eating and discussing items, which will be fun for our viewing audience. So, number, first item on the agenda is agenda changes. Does anyone have any agenda changes? Nope. Public comments for non-agenda items? Is there anyone in the audience who has a non-agenda item? Mary Jo? Yeah, okay. All right. Okay. So, our first item is revisions to the official map and zoning regulations. Do we want to briefly touch on what we just did? Or are we gonna save this for later?
The bullet item first is site visit observations and feedback received.
From Patty Quinn. So, I would suggest taking that up first since that's where you were. But maybe it would be good to preface by saying, at the May 8th meeting, this was an agenda item. And for the viewing public, you had a public hearing in March, and that public hearing was on the proposed changes to the official map and proposed zoning changes to add a new section to our village area design standards related to public open space requirements. And you got a lot of public feedback at that hearing. So, it took you both of your April meetings to work your way through all the comments and decide what additional changes you wanted to make based on all of the good suggestions. And at the April 24th meeting, you concluded that conversation and gave me my marching orders to update the official map proposal and up, you know, and that sort of thing. And so, at the May 8th meeting, I delivered to you the revised versions. But we didn't have a quorum at that meeting, so the four members that were there chatted about it and said, "We'll put this on the first meeting in June to try to wrap it up." The idea being that if we can, it'd be good to get closure at the Planning Commission phase of this proposal and forward it to the Select Board. And so, there's, your packets included the revised proposal as well as a draft memo to the Select Board explaining the process and the changes. I don't really need your blessing on the memo. That's a memo from me, but I wanted to give it to you so if you wanted me to modify it at all, I'd be happy to do so. But what I do need your blessing on is that you're ready to send these changes to the Select Board. Or you're not. You need more time.
So, I hope folks had a chance to look at the minutes from our last meeting where we did discuss the number 36, which we just visited. But we'll continue that discussion. But yeah, that is the goal for sure, to send this on tonight. And maybe even fit in, I mean, we're starting a half hour late, but maybe even fitting in a bit of a discussion about the speakers that we heard at our last meeting, so.
So, again, for the viewing audiences' pleasure, everyone in the room, including Mary Jo Brays, but not Kate, spent an hour and a half or so up on the Quinn Estate property doing a site visit to take a look at community facility number 36 on the proposed official map. And that was the subject of some conversation at the May 8th meeting as well. And just to put it in the record, I had, as I indicated back then, I was trying to reach out to the Quinn family or the Quinn Estate to get their feedback on the official map, not having heard much from them even dating back to the fall when we had first notified landowners about this, these changes. Anyways, she did get back to me last week and said that, you know, they were busy and she had moved. But in any case, she was aware of the proposal, and we discussed it at some length. And it was a very productive conversation. She, as I explained on the site visit, indicated that her brother used to sugar at the edge of the meadow, kind of on the corner of where this proposed community facility would be. And that that corner tended to be wet and that it might be a good idea if we went up and took a look at that in case we were planning a park in a wet spot that might not be so good. And when I asked her if, you know, I said, "I realize this is a pretty significant new potential public facility on your property that, you know, wasn't there, there were no plans for before. How do you feel about that?" Her comment was, "Well, if the town's looking to take this portion of our property and get in the way of our sale, because the property is for sale, you know, that would be a bad thing, and they wouldn't be supportive of that." But she said, "I think I believe the understanding is that you would like to put it on this map so that you could have a discussion with any future developer who buys the property to talk about the potential for a park in this location." She said, "That's fine with us." They are, as I said, in the process of trying to move the property, and they need to to be able to close the estate. And so, we've been trying to provide potential buyers with information. Anyways, so it was a good conversation on that front, and it was also helpful because as I explained on the site visit, she gave me a much better understanding of the history of the town cemetery that's adjacent to the property. And what we called on the site visit, the Manning Lot, that is on the map that was distributed at the visit, Town Cemetery undeveloped portion or undeveloped land. And that, apparently, the Mannings donated that to the town quite some time ago, and there isn't good access to it. And so, Patty's mom, Polly, when she was still alive, expressed a desire to provide the town with access through their property to get to that back Manning Lot, because she knew there was no other good way to get there except through her property. And so, Patty said that they've been in conversations with the Cemetery Commission, Mary Jo and Jerry, what's Jerry's last name? Belial. And Glenn Place is another commissioner. So, they've been in conversations with the Cemetery Commission about possibly donating some land on the north side of the property, but also, and maybe more importantly, an access over the field that we walked, so the town could have an access to that back Manning Lot that we don't have good access to today. And Patty said that the estate's still interested in doing that. They want to honor their mom's wishes. And there have been back and forth communications over the last year or so, primarily with Jerry Belial from the Cemetery Commission. And our office had worked with them to talk about a simple boundary line adjustment to make that possible. As you know, we changed the regs last year to require surveys whenever a boundary line adjustment happens to have better tracking of records. Turns out, the state either already has or is about to change state law to require the same thing. So, we were on the cutting edge of that. But it's going to be required statewide in any case, from what I understand. And as a result of that, the Cemetery Commissioner, or at least Jerry, indicated that figuring out how to pay for that required survey was a little bit of an issue. Because the hope was that the town could absorb the costs of this boundary line adjustment since it's a generous donation by the Quinn Estate, but a survey costs money. And so, there's still discussions ongoing about that. And that's kind of a separate issue from what you're talking about with the official map. But I think that the Quinn family's desire to provide the town with some sort of access through there is pretty important and dovetails nicely with what we've been talking about for this community facility 36 and the access to it. So, I'm talking a lot, but I'm just trying to do the exposition so that you guys can talk. So, the finish of the exposition is, you did a site visit, we walked up to the top of the field, we walked into the woods, and at the base of the hill to what is the back meadow on that Manning Town Cemetery Lot. And I believe most of you walked out to the Town Cemetery and down that through the developed portion of the cemetery. Dan and I walked back out to the field and out that way.
It was nice. It was a, the wooded part is a really nice area.
Most of us walked back through here. We didn't, I don't think anybody walked through the cemetery.
Oh, you didn't? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. Yeah, it was, it's really nice.
You walked through the woods back?
Back along that line.
Okay, great.
Sea Trail.
Oh, so you came back around the backside of the hill?
Yeah.
Oh.
Not all the way down. Not where the sea trail is, more up.
More up slowly?
Upgrade.
Right.
I guess I was curious, I wasn't sure of how much of what we have is orange here, was that steep slope?
Yeah, let me bring it up on the screen.
I'm not sure if any of it was. Maybe we just saw it from the town property section. I wonder about that.
I can bring the map that I passed out up on the screen and then turn on some of the slope layers so you can get a better sense of that.
I think the steep slope is on the other side of the orange line.
I don't think so. We'll see.
You think it's in that, what appears to be sort of open area, though it's wooded?
Yeah, so, well, let me get up on screen, and that'll be easier to talk about. I can only imagine that the top of the hill, which on your map says Town Cemetery undeveloped parcel, which you can see on the photo is, you know, green with pines, as you come down the hill, it's all, it must be all maples. That must have been the sugar bush that was, you know, what the family was utilizing.
That area, that looks brown.
Yeah. But here, I'll zoom in on this map so you can all see it a little.
James, we went from that back meadow.
Across that white property line and down, down around the parcel and then went into it? You think that's what we did?
I don't sure. I'm not sure we.
Around in here.
Well, we were in here.
In there.
Right? You think we went down this way?
Right, in there.
At various stages cut in?
I don't think so. I guess I'm just wondering, could we put topography lines on there?
Put the slopes up and the contours? Yeah, hold on just a sec.
We were kind of more to the west in the back meadow. We didn't go super deep.
Because I went down the hill.
Here are the steepest slopes in purple.
Through here?
The purple, yep. And you can see on the B-line, that's what we walked to get back to the back meadow. So, you were walking at one point right at the base of that relatively steep slope.
Oh, yeah, so that's what we saw on the right, and it was that.
And then, in orange, these are the moderately steep slopes. So, and if I put the contours on, I'm gonna make it altogether hard to see anything, but I'll turn those a different color so you can make them out a little bit better, make them red. Those are, that's not very easy to see either, but make them bigger.
So, most of the designated parcel is wooded?
Yes. It's all wooded, except for, I'll cheat because I have the laser pointer, except our viewing audience can't see that. So, this portion here that the cursor's on, that's designated as Community Facility 36, and that's where sort of the edge of the meadow is and is relatively flat ground with that draw that we saw that was a little, became a little wet in this corner, and then we entered the woods here and walked around. So, it sounds like you all maybe walked back through this way.
Yeah.
Close to where that white line is, or maybe even inside of that a little bit, at the base of the.
Yeah, we were uphill a little bit.
You were up a little bit.
Yes, a little bit.
So, yeah, I mean, a lot of that back where your cursor is was nice and, you know, seemed fairly gentle. Lots could be done there, but yeah, you know, certainly that purple, I was wondering.
I think I wandered down.
It's an interesting hill, but as far as some of the things, I mean, maybe some bike trails up there, but.
Yeah, you're right, James. It's a good point. In terms of, and this was a part of the discussion at the May 8th meeting, let me turn some of these things off a little bit so it's easier to see the official map element. Part of the discussion at the May 8th meeting, I think John actually submitted some questions ahead of that meeting because he wasn't going to be able to be there, was, "Well, why is this so big? Why did I draw it this big when originally on the first version, it was smaller?" And my thought was, and you're in charge, not me, so let's make it the way you think it ought to be. My thought was that this is not really that usable, the purple, the steepest slopes. But it's an interesting hill feature, and it might be nice to, because the town owns the peak, might be nice to just incorporate the bulk of the hill in the town ownership and provide for a reasonable way to get vehicular access, as Andrea Merganti, who was also in the site visit, was advocating that, you know, this would be the better way to have vehicular access rather than the B-line. My thought was that vehicular access wants to be at the bottom of the slope and not up here where it's moderate, not super steep, but moderate slopes. And as a result, you end up with a larger polygon that might give you some ability to either A, have a sugar bush up here of some small sort, especially if it were combined with other areas, the town could lease this back to someone who was sugaring. Or, we talked about the potential for, in these woods, at the base of that steep slope earlier, the potential for maybe a little pump park, similar to what you see at Maple Street Park in Essex Junction. And that would be in a more wooded area, and perhaps there could be some trail connections, you know, through here as well. But, James, you're right, there's, this is, you know, relatively workable, even though there are some moderate slopes, it's really just this edge that's the difficult spot. So, I've talked enough. Did you all have any other observations about, that you saw out there that you want to get into the record before we go esoteric and start talking, you know, maps and documents?
I guess I'm just unsure of the wet area, which, you know, we got an inch and a quarter a couple of days ago, two and a half inches a few days before that, so it didn't seem ridiculously wet to me considering. But I don't know enough to know whether that's, you know, how much of an issue.
Call that wet.
Yeah, let me put the.
Andrea was talking about some kind of plant she saw that indicate.
There's definitely, there's definitely in this, so, the way that you read contours is, here's a stream, and the contours sort of pucker up streams.
Point upstream.
Point upstream. So, you can see the contours in red pointing up this stream here and up that one. So, here's another one that's not a map stream, but is certainly a draw, a feature. And that is where, this is the meadow where we're standing at the height of land. Sorry, viewing audience, you can't see my laser pointer. So, we were standing up here, and you could see that through here was that draw, and we entered the woods at that wet spot sort of in here. So, there's definitely a drainage feature happening here.
Well, we all walked through it too on the way back.
We walked through it coming in.
There wasn't any standing water, but you could tell there had been.
It's working better than the bottom piece of my property right now.
So, it's, at least now, this time here, it didn't seem excessively wet. Most of the other, even the steep portion, but even the uphill side of that, or this side of it, looked, well, you know, anybody can tear up things, but tough land to develop. You know, a lot of what's designated here, it's really only that which is to the lower left of that sea trail, so to speak, or which has some wetness to it that is, you know, potentially developable and usable for sort of, you know, various forms of recreation, I guess. It's tough, other than sort of natural uses in that other sort of wedge, to develop actively up there, I think is difficult. You've seen it done, you've seen it done.
So, that is what Patty's comment was, that we want to be thinking about how much of this area that we would like to be a future developed park with not just grassy lawn, but active uses, how much of that is viable for that? And certainly, the portion down here closer to where we entered the woods is where I saw that vegetation differential that Andrea was mentioning, different species of grass. I don't know if it was rice cut grass or not, but that, to my eye, that feature really was within the bottom of that draw. I didn't, once you stepped out of it, it looked like.
It changed.
It changed, and you were out of what may, might have been a wetland area and in an upland area. But I am not a wetland ecologist, and so, you know, wouldn't pretend to be able to say how, what percentage of this field area that we've shown on the map is upland versus lowland or wetland, official wetland designation.
So, just to revisit the description of 36, yada, yada, "Robust amenities to encourage neighborhood use and engagement of the larger Heinsberg community. For example, benches, picnic tables, gazebo shelter, playground facilities, shade trees, public art, hard surface courts, tennis or pickleball or basketball, bicycle pump track, and so on, connected to town trails." Yeah, I don't know enough either. I mean, it seems certainly picnic tables, gazebo shelters, certainly.
Very doable, I thought.
I'm sorry?
Very doable, I thought.
It's the hard surface courts, I know. Nothing else. I assume you want them level, not like that.
Makes for interesting pickleball.
Yeah.
And maybe those wouldn't be appropriate there.
Well, I think it's good to think about the whole section. So, here, I'm just trying to quickly bring another data layer on the screen to help turn off the contours. So, this area where the cursor is, here where we entered the woods, was that sort of wetish area and the draw or drainage that sort of ran up this way. But what, you know, you guys actually may have walked through it, I didn't. This area here, at least on the map and what it looked like from the high point, didn't appear to have those issues. So, it might be that if this were a sort of a rectangular park, that your more improved areas like hard court, pickleball, whatever, might be in this vicinity, whereas over here you might have more of the dispersed elements that could be up and out of the draw or what have you.
All of that area that you're pointing to, that's in the meadow, is low. You don't have views out from there. That was very noticeable as we came down where the high rock is over here in the middle, that blocks all of that.
Yeah, it's interesting. Dan and I were talking about on the way out that as we walked up the, into the field, there are great views from this whole lower meadow out to the Adirondacks. And as we came up around this way and then came to a high point here, there were still great views, but the moment you dipped just here, this feature, that rocky treed cobble sort of blocks the view. So, this whole upper meadow back in here does not have those views.
But it would be fun to clamber to the top of this section to see, to see what, you know, what would there be in the winter. I think, James, were you, did somebody mention that?
Andrea B.?
Yes.
Andrea said.
Oh, up here.
So, there's fantastic views.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, I could see that if this were a town, I mean, that is owned by the town already, and if there were trails that accessed it, that could be a viewpoint for the public. I could see this neighborhood having maybe a private viewpoint, or unless they wanted to make it public, you know, here on this area, that would be more integrated into their neighborhood.
Now, this map that you gave us, that we were looking at, was prepared for looking at three different ways to get access back in here. Our view is more over the entire Quinn parcel, and we want a connection from 36 down to Mechanicsville, but not necessarily one that goes along the edge here. It could be some of the neighborhood street that come up to this corner, and then you have access around that way.
Absolutely, yeah.
To get to the back meadow.
You, John in particular, and Maggie, I think, were advocating on the official map to make that road connection fuzzy. And so, it's just a circle saying, "Location to be determined based on the development plan." And so, yes, the actual road connection from Mechanicsville Road, where that happens is very much still flexible. I think for the purposes of the discussions that the Cemetery Commission is having with the Quinn Estate, they're gonna want to nail that down a little more clearly because I think the estate is interested in providing the town with that easement before they sell and before a new owner is on the scene and maybe doesn't want to provide that access. So, we'll just have to see where those conversations go and whether that easement is a floating easement or whether it's pinned down to a particular area for the benefit of cemetery access.
You think if they develop above there, they're gonna need that spot for stormwater?
That's a good question, Dennis. Usually, it's, water flows downhill, and you oftentimes see stormwater treatment at the lower end of projects. Yeah, so that's a good question. I don't know. Again, not having.
I mean, I think you'd want to delineate that wetlands before you just, I know it costs money, but you hate to, we've been in that boat before.
You're right, we have, where we thought we had a viable, viable place for a soccer field, and it turned out we couldn't do it there.
Yeah.
So, that's.
The state's pretty picky on wetlands now. You might not think it's wet.
But I do think that when it comes to development of the upper meadow, the way the contours work, everything ends up down here, but there's a way to capture that before it hits the lowest spot. Then again, maybe a stormwater treatment feature that serves multiple purposes on what would be the official map area might be a worthwhile thing too, something that's aesthetically pleasing and works within the context of people playing and having quiet space or what have you. But that's a good question about whether a wetland delineation happens or should happen before, after, only when the development is, you know, actively being pursued. What I explained.
Well, I'm just saying, you might, if it's too hard of a site, you might want somewhere different on that site.
Right, right, yep.
Before it's too late.
Yeah, my understanding is, I don't believe a wetland delineation has been done, at least not in recent times, for the Quinn property, so we don't, we just don't have that information.
No.
We do have, we did tromp around, so we have some on-the-ground understanding, and we also have.
I'm sure that even that access area to the cemetery is probably gonna get involved in it.
How so? Oh, around the.
Because they're probably gonna be crossing it.
Yeah, possibly. If it were the B-area, let me take the contours off for a second and show you. Hydric soils, which the wetland office has advised us sometimes indicates where you have potential wetlands. So, the turquoise is where hydric soils are, and that doesn't mean they're wetlands, it just means that it's a flag to say, "Might want to have a delineation done." So.
It goes right through the high point.
Dennis's point is well taken. It takes, yeah, obviously, this area up here where we were standing, I don't think was, is wetland, but these areas down here that sort of followed where the draw was and the stream that comes up around are all highlighted, so it's something to think about.
I walked through that area before you told me that it was wet, and I didn't notice that it was wet.
No, it wasn't.
It doesn't have to be wet.
Well, I know. I understand that delineation.
It's the vegetation.
That's all it is, is the vegetation.
It's vegetation in the soil, hydrological regime in the soil, and that's, to do a formal delineation, you need someone who knows what they're doing to identify the vegetation and do some small shovelfuls to see what the soil profiles are.
So, is that, what's the process? Is that a state, I mean, would you call the state in to do that?
No, we could get advice from the state, and they would just sort of walk around a bit, and those people do have expertise with vegetation and can give you a decent idea based on that. But a formal delineation would be hiring a wetland ecologist.
What's the price to?
It's not that expensive, actually, to do wetland delineations, especially for, you know, a small area.
Very fine area.
Yeah. We're talking in the hundreds of dollars, not the thousands of dollars.
So, I, you know, I'll be honest, I would, I mean, I would hate for this to prevent us from moving this forward to the Select Board.
Are we not sort of, you know, we're not doing a natural resource inventory of this land. Some of these connections to the cemetery are important, it sounds like. But insofar as if a creative development proposal occurred that jiggled some of these com- that jiggled some of these components around for the betterment of the development as a whole, but still provided the kinds of amenities that we're talking about in this area, would that not be looked upon favorably?
Oh, it should be. In fact, you had me draft the notes on the map and the narrative that goes with it to say just that. That these areas are approximate only and all that, yep.
This exact parcel may not be configured in quite this way once someone starts to look at this in a creative fashion. But on the other hand, it's also leveraged potentially to make sure that these kinds of public resources are provided, as well as these linkages to the cemetery. So, for us to sort of, I think, get into great angst about whether this parcel's gonna do it all for us, I think, you know, seems immaterial at this point.
But it seems like there's a question, though, in terms of the Cemetery Commission and the Quinn estate wanting to have some kind of definition of the accessibility we're talking about.
Can't you just sort of say?
I think it should stay loose.
It needs to be provided in the sale of the property, that whoever requires the land has to provide access for the cemetery.
Lawyers can write it any way we want it to happen and they'll make sure it's enforceable. The clearest and sort of gold standard is, here's a survey. We show the easement area and then we have a deed, when it's transferred to a new owner, that says, "There's an easement, non-exclusive, it's for the town's use, but also for the landowner's use, and it's in this spot as described on a survey map." That's the clearest sort of nailing it down.
Where do you think it's going? Because you need to know what plans work, things, it's even feasible to even do it. Right? They're not gonna build the road up through there.
Who isn't gonna build the road?
Quins.
No.
They're just giving the...
Right, the developer would. The future developer would build the road.
The access road to the cemetery?
The access road to the future neighborhood, which the town would presumably...
Connect to.
Utilize to get to that back portion towards the cemetery.
Just like we use Mechanicsville Road to get to the road to the cemetery.
Right. So, there's one level, which is, it's nailed down. Everyone knows exactly where it is and there's a map showing it. And then there's the other level, which the town did with the neighboring property, the Thistle Hill Development, where we said, "We want the ability to have a potential future road connection from the end of Thistle Hill Drive to Levine Hill Road." We know there's a huge ravine and there's a stream and wetlands, but we want that potential. And so, that project was approved with a floating easement that said, "We don't know exactly where it is, it's in this general vicinity, and the final location will be determined collaboratively by the town and the landowner." And that's a possibility too, that might be more attractive to the Quins and any potential buyer to know that we have some wiggle room as to where it goes.
And, yeah, attractive to the buyer because there's wiggle room for that and for this, for the park.
Right.
So...
Well, and there's also the potential for whatever road a developer were to put in that we would share, that the town would take it over. There'd be a reason for that to become a town road that the developer would be able to build and then not have to maintain, which is a positive thing. Developers prefer to be able to, A, connect to municipal water and sewer, and B, not saddle their new neighborhood with the cost of snow plowing and road maintenance long-term, but to have that become a town function, which the Select Board has always been a bit reluctant to do, except in the village area and except when those roads are either through roads, which this would not be, or roads that connect to public facilities, like a recreation area or a park or what have you.
So, the access to the cemetery would only happen if this land gets developed?
I don't know. Mary Jo, what do you think about that? If this land state is a big ag field forever, you think the cemetery would ever build an access?
I know the cemetery doesn't have money.
Right.
So, it's what the town wants to vote to put a road through, you know, I think...
I mean, the road would be totally different than a development road if it was just for the cemetery.
Right.
Right.
It'd be a lot smaller.
Much narrower.
It seems more feasible to wait for a developer to put the road in and then have access off from it, to me.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, that's why, when I did a version of this map for Mary Jo a while back, I put those options, A, B, C, and the length, you know, how many feet that would be. Because even with a narrow road, you know, if you're on option B, which is the most direct through the Quinn property, that's, you know, almost 1,700 feet of road. That's a lot. That's gonna be real expensive to put in, no matter how you do it. Yeah, and the Cemetery Commission is not flush with money to just make that up.
And actually, that little, where you've got the possible Quinn transfer area, I mean, that little area that they wanna give us, the only really usable part is the 75 feet in the meadow for the road, because rest of that's all wet area with two streams going through. So, it's not like we can go in there and say, "Oh, we can put 15, 20 graves in here somewhere," because...
It doesn't give you any grave space.
Not really. There is a little bit if you walked up the road.
Up the cemetery road?
Actually, not on the Quinn land, not what's marked out here as Quinn land. There's really no space in there, really, to use as cemetery.
Yeah, it's that manning property, the back meadow, as indicated on the map up here in the back, that provides the potential. And you were all standing in it, so you could see that portion. I will say, just so that, try to get as much of what Patty told me on the record, she still feels like this possible Quinn transfer area that I'm circling on the map, I mentioned to her, I said, "I know that you were thinking of donating that land as well as an access in the field to get to the back." I said, "I don't know that there's a lot of usable land in that transfer area." And she did say, she didn't feel like it was, the stream was impossible to cross and that there might be usable area in the transfer, that transfer area as well. And I didn't wanna argue with her about it. They're interested in donating it, that's a good thing. But we both agreed that the access itself seemed to be the more significant than that chunk of land because of the back meadow beyond, on the town land that we already own but can't get to.
But if you walk up that road that goes straight up to cemetery, you can kind of look out and see the meadow. So, you can walk up there and kind of look out and see what you think is usable.
But it's in...
I don't see a whole lot.
Yeah, it's in the meadow area rather than that transfer piece. A is the shortest distance, coming off the top of the road, the highest end of the road of the cemetery and crossing that stream, and you're into the, to the back meadow.
Yeah, and I think Andrea Marganti was indicating, when you were all standing in the meadow, I think you were just getting there, John. Somebody asked about that and Andrea thought that the, there's not enough turning radius from the end of the loop.
Big trucks couldn't do it, but depending on what you...
Yeah, what's your...
What your use was for that area.
Right, if it was to be a green burial site that didn't require...
That's what she was saying.
Right, large trucks and...
Just a small, small excavator.
That was my thought too, Mary Jo. When I made this earlier version of the map for you guys, I was like, "Well, the A connection is short and sweet and we already own it."
Right, you'd still have to do something over the group.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
But you've got maple trees and then a short distance from the maple trees are those fir trees or whatever they are, pine trees, that belong to that other property, so there's not much width in there. And if you're trying to turn around a vault truck or something.
Yeah, I can zoom in a little bit, so it's a little easier to see what we're talking about here.
And, you know, you were kind of talking about the natural burial area, which some people are interested in. But I don't know about having something that's that close to all those waterways.
Hold on a second here, I'm a little out of the map world. Well, a little hard to zoom in with our iMac and the software, but there's the end of the road. This is like a 20-foot-wide slice of land that was part of that manning property that we own.
Is that on the other side of the fence?
It is, right?
On the other side?
So, to be able to get from here down here is the question. And you've got grave sites to work around, so it's just a narrow, it would be a narrow access and then a stream crossing. But it's certainly a lot shorter than everything else we've been talking about through the Quinn property.
You think your grave sites come close enough to that boundary so that only that long skinny...
Here, let me force this thing to let me zoom in a bit more.
Yeah, there's a cedar hedge.
Right up to that chain link fence.
Right, it's right against the chain link fence.
Is there a hedge back there? I seem to recall that it was...
There's, there's a row of trees.
Because I've been to a burial there and we weren't looking at Russell's, Russell's house.
It's just right at the top.
I think there's a hedge behind...
There's a row of trees and there's a row of pines.
You can't see it right there.
Yeah, there it is. And it's cedars. And you can't see Fox's house.
Looks like there's an access or a cross that we're creating.
Farm road. Standing in the meadow.
Yeah. I thought you guys walked that way, but you didn't, so you didn't get to see it.
We weren't that far over.
Right, you were all, if I zoom out, I'm on now. You were all standing over here.
Yeah.
Looking, you know, through here, I guess.
But this line that defines the back meadow, that line could be erased. That's part of the town's cemetery, even though it's not being used right now, right?
This line here.
That line can go away.
Yeah, and this line here.
And then you just have to fit in between the trees, the hedge, and... The property line looks...
Yep. Might just need to take down some of the trees, actually. Or take down some of the hedge. In any case, it's all good information to have, but it's all revolving around your discussion about Community Facility 36 and whether it's drawn the way you want it to be for what you're proposing to the Select Board, or if you'd like to shrink it or move it or whatever.
I say we keep it the way it is.
I say we keep it the way it is and some of these adjustments in the future can be made. Somehow, we can describe that, we anticipate that the details need to be worked out once more information is gathered and a developer is actually there, talking with us at the table.
How much land, Alex, is in that portion of the Quinn parcel on the other side of the road that we walked on today? I recognize that some of it's in the Village District, some is not.
Oh, how much is total?
The entire parcel.
The entire Quinn property? Here, let me try to, let me try to bring that up, because...
I thought you said it was like 107 or something.
I think I can bring up a little calculation that Mitch and I did with all the acreages and the development potential and all that, if I can just get to the right DAX map number. In fact, I just emailed it to a fellow who's looking at the property.
Beyond the Levine Hill Road?
Yes, it does. It does go beyond the Levine Hill Road. Uh, let's see here.
And 36 is, how many acres did you make it?
Seven.
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 Yeah, look at your...
I was asking because I just, okay, so what is the percentage of that seven acres to the parcel as a whole? The point of the question.
Less than 20%. Less than 20%, I'm guessing. Oh, yeah, if you take, if that were 25%, it doesn't, four of those doesn't cover all of Quinn.
Portionally, it looks sort of like 10% or less.
Oops, I'm not seeing anything up there because I took it off screen. So, here's a map that we made a couple of years ago when the property went on the market. And, a little hard to read, so let me zoom in. This was when both sides of the road were being sold. As all of you, I think, know, the west side was sold to, was sold to some different folks and the east side is still for sale and that's what we were looking at. So, if I zoom in here, there it is. The east side of the road is 106 acres. And within the Residential One District, which is the area zoned for growth and within the sewer service area, that's 39 acres. And the wooded portion that's in the rural Residential One District is 67 acres.
Okay, so that seven-acre parcel is about 6.5% of that eastern parcel as a whole. Just for information.
Yeah, maybe 20% or a little less than 20% of the R1 district portion, the most developable portion. The calculations, if you're interested, are right here. So, for the east side, within the, within the Residential One District, the 39 acres, we have to subtract out the stream buffer area because our density allowance says we do that. And so, it's, it has a maximum build-out if the full density bonuses are achieved of 143 dwelling units. So, it's got significant development potential. I doubt that it'll ever see that much. It would require, you know, mostly multifamily development, you know, structures to make that happen, but certainly a lot of potential there.
Wait, the, uh, all right, hold on. And the...
The portion that's not in R1, you could have 27 dwelling units. So, that's 170 total on that 106 acres.
Yep.
Alex, I just have a question. I forget why it is drawn at an angle and not...
Yeah, so on the official map of community facility, the boundary of it sort of runs parallel to the meadow instead of being squared off. And the reason was just because that is, there's a lot of development potential there. And if it were squared off, we'd be encumbering more of it. And so, I thought that was an adequate width to get your bocce courts and your gazebo and your play structure and all that, but still keep it on the edge of the meadow rather than out in the middle of that meadow, which is, if I were developing it, I'd be planning for roads and stormwater infrastructure and as many house sites as I could get in that beautiful back meadow. Although, a developer who understands community infrastructure probably would want to orient a good chunk of that development to this park, so that it was, you know, available to all those folks to just walk out there, walk out their doors and go have a good time. Especially if it was a denser neighborhood and there weren't, you know, half-acre yards and everyone's in their backyard.
I don't know, I'm kind of with Ralph. Make no changes.
Keep it the way you talked about.
I'm good with that. Any further discussion on 36?
It wouldn't want to be any smaller than what we've designated. It's really pretty.
How much space is being set aside for opening block route?
How much space is being set aside for opening Black Rock?
Um, the map that we have shows those spaces as, oh, look what the acreage is. If you have the narrative that goes with the map, it gives you the various acreages. There are three distinct areas on Black Rock, if I zoom in here a little bit. Areas thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two. Well, shoot, my copy disappeared. There's another one here.
About nine acres.
Thanks, James. Yep, nine or ten. No, sorry. Uh, thirty is point, is five point two, two point six, seven, yeah, about nine, you're right.
What's the parcel size of Black Rock overall?
Uh, let me look, I don't have that number in my head. It's similar to the Quinn property in that, um, the overall parcel is large, but it's in two zoning districts. A portion of it is in the village growth area and in the sewer service area, and the back portion is not. So here it is. And that property that just flashed green is the, is the property in question. It's seventy-five acres total. And of that, I think, I want to say forty is in the village growth area and the rest of this, this back area where it's wooded and wetland and such.
But you're going to have another number thirty on this property too possibly, right? With a future sidewalk?
On the Black Rock property?
No, on the Quinn.
Hmm, the Quinn property.
We, we're showing a sidewalk along Mechanicsville Road.
So the Quinn property that, I've got it up on screen, Dennis, if you want to look at it, it's, uh, there's the property, there's the park we've been talking about.
Yeah.
And then we've got a road connection somewhere, flexible. And then, uh, trail connection coming away from the park down to connect to this Sullivan Trail. And then, yes, a future sidewalk along Route, along Mechanicsville.
But that would be a green belt, kind of like.
No, it would definitely not be like thirty. That's a good question. So thirty along Route one sixteen is meant to be a wide, like, hundred feet wide green belt with a sidewalk running through it. This number, uh, this sidewalk shown here is just meant to be a roadside sidewalk, similar to what you might see, um.
Talked about that sidewalk.
We talked about that, and, and it's a one, the one piece, uh, from the May eighth meeting that, uh, at the end of the, the, that paragraph in the minutes, um, the group agreed that this would need to be settled when more commissioners were present, because some folks thought that however unlikely it is, the sidewalk on the east side um, of Mechanicsville, that we should keep it there just for intent, you know, to have, have the connect, you know, um, and, uh.
It, it might, I think we talked about it, might not even be a sidewalk along the road, but there might be a way to go from Mulberry Lane all the way up to near the cemetery through the new neighborhood.
Well, exactly, if, if the connection can be made through the cemetery by other means, then, um, it may not be necessary to continue, continue all the way to the cemetery, um, and past, I'm sorry, I've forgotten the name of the homeowners, uh, there, but, um.
There was also discussion at that meeting about, since there is a sidewalk on the west side.
Do we just?
Do we need a sidewalk on the east side? Or do, would it be, uh, just as fine to have designated crosswalks, uh, with flashing beacons at, uh, if, if we showed them on this map, they would be, um, at the cemetery, at whatever road, you know, main road comes out to Mechanicsville for the Quinn property, and perhaps at Hawk Lane. And with those three pedestrian crosswalks, um, you wouldn't need this sidewalk, long sidewalk connection because people could safely make their way across to get to the existing sidewalk. And so I think, like you said, Maggie, there was back and forth about that.
And to quote Ralph Kay, who's sitting right next to me, probably forgets completely what he said. Um, Ralph Kay thought it made sense to show the future sidewalk to convey the town's intent for pedestrian access and connectivity, even if the ultimate solution was something other than a road-aligned sidewalk. You know, the fact is, as I walk, because I parked at the cemetery, and as I walk that section, um, to the road that we, we walked up to the property, it just seems so unlikely that we would, um.
Put a sidewalk there.
Right, it, it seems highly unlikely and, and unnecessary. I think there are other ways to access that.
Figuring out where the crosswalks need to go is going to be exercise, but I think it's a doable exercise.
Well, and, and it can't happen now, I mean, when the property is developed, when we know where those roads are going to be.
Where the roads are.
Leave it, leave it flexible, but.
Although we do know where the town cemetery entrance is, which is a destination. And we do know where Hawk Lane is, which is another destination, small neighborhood there. Seems like we could be proactive and push the select board to maybe create pedestrian crossings with rapid flashers at those locations right now.
Right.
If the, yeah, if the Quinn access road is really where we walked up, it'll be a little odd having two crosswalks within fifty feet. Maybe we need to do that. I just, I, I just think it's really unlikely that a sidewalk's going to go in there, given other priorities and.
You mean just that section or the entire east side?
The entire thing, and, and, and I walked, I walked down that sidewalk from the CVU fields. And, you know, I, last time we walked it, I really hadn't noticed how, how wide that is and how nice that is. That's, that's a substantial piece of infrastructure there. I think it, it serves us well. And, you know, I, I don't think we need extra.
No, and talk about wetlands, the, from Hawk Lane north. There's cat tails and all kinds of things in there, so.
Yeah, Barbara and I were talking about that every day, that this lower portion of the Quinn property, where, where there used to be a well, actually, the town well there was drilled and then it wasn't used and got capped, but that is quite wet in that lower portion. Well, you've gone back and forth on this, uh, I think it was off the map entirely in the first draft. It went back on the map somewhat at Andrea Marganti's urging, um, just to throw her under the bus because she's not here. But I remember her suggesting it and, and you agreed. And then you got all that feedback at the public hearing from people who lived on the upper portion of Mechanicsville Road saying, this is a bad idea, you know, there's not going to be, not a good idea to put a sidewalk, uh, up there at least.
Yeah, not, not up that far.
Right, but then it, it extended your conversation to thinking, well, do we need the rest of it at all? And so now you're, you're back there again, so.
I just wonder how long it's going to be before the property's actually developed, because I, I tend to agree. I think it's highly unlikely and probably incredibly redundant to, to have an, an east side sidewalk. But I do like the idea of putting it there just to indicate that, um, walkability is important to us and whether there's.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, and I know that's been Ralph's point too, but I would point you to our regulations, which say that within the village growth area, walkability is key. So the, the, the development review board is, um, not just authorized, but instructed to make sure that any new neighborhood that gets built in here has pedestrian functionality and priority. So I, I don't think we need to, you need to put a red line on the map that you don't really think's ever going to be along Mechanicsville Road to make that happen. I think that will happen as a part of the review process. These lines are where we want there to be public infrastructure, where the town thinks that we should have a public facility. And if you don't think we need or can afford to maintain another public facility along that side of the road, I wouldn't put it there.
I mean, if, if you think about the Mechanics, the official map, kind of what it does when, when development is proposed. And if, if, if you're going to go through that for infrastructure that you really, you know, don't believe in, you know, a hundred and twenty percent, um, shouldn't be on the official map. That's my take on it.
So are we going to have three crosswalks then? Hawk Lane, a floater for wherever the development is, and cemetery.
Yeah, whether or not you add those to the map the way we added number seven, I think maybe is, um, not so important. The reason seven was on there is because you anticipate a brand-new road. And it's going to need an intersection improvement with crosswalks and all that good stuff. These are other opportunities for crosswalks at the existing cemetery access and at Hawk Lane. It's, we control the right-of-way, we can, we can do those. Development's not going to get in our way, uh, of, of those projects because it, it's fully within the right-of-way.
So far, the development along Mechanicsville Road, uh, is houses directly accessible from Mechanicsville Road. Everybody has a driveway that can go into their property on both sides. Right?
If I think about Hawk Lane, no.
No, Hawk Lane is a road, and then off of Hawk Lane, there are individual parcels. But otherwise, all along Mechanicsville Road are the houses accessible. Is that aren't, we haven't talked about this section of Mechanicsville Road. Is that our expectation? Do we want to prevent that? Do we want to encourage that? Right now, we've been talking, I think, a lot about, oh, the whole parcel develops as, as one plan, like the Village Northwest. What does that mean for the houses that might be along that side of the Quinn property? Are there backsides toward Mechanicsville Road? Or do they want to have access from the Mechanicsville Road, from a developer's point of view? Might a developer want to buy that whole thing and then, that whole parcel? And then propose to start things off, make some parcels right along Mechanicsville Road and sell those off?
How would that, that's a good question, John, but how would that impact the, the, the decision about this red line? And whether it should be there or not?
Doesn't.
Okay.
Except that, what are we saying about the development sort of within the Quinn property? Can it have continuous access along Mechanicsville Road or not? Hadn't to do with the sidewalk, has to do just access into individual parcels, individual houses.
Oh, there won't be fifty different road cuts, that, that's for sure.
Driveway cuts?
Yeah.
Well, how do we know that? Don't we have to say that somewhere? Or at least be thinking about that now?
DRB.
Yeah.
Well, so the official map is, is not the place to say that. The regulations are, but it's a good point, because I don't think the regulations spell out a vision for this corridor and how it, how that street scape ought to come alive. Um, and that might be part of the discussion we will be having later, uh, with these design standards. But it is true that, um, our highway foreman and our, and our subdivision regulations emphasize, um, fewer rather than more driveway cuts along public roads in order to minimize impacts to the public road and the, and the drainage swales along them. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that would make it impossible to have multiple driveway cuts, but I would say that generally speaking, when a large parcel comes in for subdivision, the, 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 the direction has been, um, minimize your access points and create, uh, access to development lots from a more centralized, um, new road rather than many cuts along the public road.
And I'm not advocating in any way that we have individual curb cuts to individual houses facing Mechanicsville Road. I'm just saying that whole question hasn't really been discussed. Don't we, don't we want to think about that?
I mean, that, that, the, the policy that you enumerated, Alex, is, is kind of against, you know, what we've heard about houses addressing the street, now that's a good thing. Right, but, um, you know, there are practicalities as well.
Although, frontage roads are a real thing, and actually, in the Black Rock development, um, Ike Bouger, who's the designer, or the landscape architect, has, um, sections where, uh, where there's a main public road, houses fronting on it with access behind them through a, a narrower, more alley-like road. And that's a possibility for, for a situation like this where, you know, our, our public works folks and our highway department might say, one access, run road cut only, and then figure out how to make your houses turn towards Mechanicsville Road through these, these, uh, other means. But I don't want to pretend to be the developer this lot. I don't know what they would propose or whether they would have a good street scape facing Mechanicsville Road or not.
So are there, so are, are we in agreement on, uh, deleting the east side sidewalk? You guys are easy. Um, are there, is there anything else that anyone would like to address regarding revisions to, to official map and zoning regulations, um, especially as it concerns the public comment that we've, that we've gotten?
We're good.
Alex, do we need a motion to forward this thing on?
Yes, I think that, you know, your discussion is on the record and that's nice, but it would be good to have a formal motion so I can say it was done on this date and.
Is anyone interested in tossing out an official motion?
Make a motion to forward the, uh, official map as proposed to the select board.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
This is draft eight, right?
Draft eight, yeah.
One we've got in our hands now.
Yeah.
Next.
If no discussion, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Aye.
Nay? Aye.
I say aye.
Okay. All right.
Could, could you also make another motion on the zoning regulation revisions? We haven't talked a whole lot about the, the public area design standards, but that's, that's another piece of this. It's not the official map.
All right, has everyone had a chance to look over, um, village area design standards? Uh, if there is no discussion, would someone like to make a motion? I don't think it can be Joe because he's got a sweet pea in his mouth.
So move. I'll move that.
Make a motion to.
Give me some details.
Okay, um, that the village area design standards will be forwarded for approval to the select board.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, beautiful. Thank you, everyone, that's.
You want a pee?
Shut.
Not anywhere. All right. And, uh, comments about Alex's memo, even though he says, we, he doesn't really need our comments?
I don't need your.
Those peas do.
I don't need your approval, I just, I, I would be happy to take any comments and, and make revisions to the memo as, uh.
Looked good.
It did look good.
Yeah. I will change the date and when it was completed, since it was a month ago, but.
Okay.
Beautiful, um, so we've got just a little bit of time, maybe, uh, does anyone, I'm, I'm trying to think if we want to, um, we want to get into Arctic, we've got about twenty-five minutes, but we also have, uh, minutes from three separate meetings, um, plus a little bit of other business. What do you think, Alex? Is it worth jumping into? What do you think, Alex? Is it worth jumping into?
I think it would be great to, to get these minutes done, since we've been dragging out for three meetings, and that'll take you, I don't think that'll take you very long. And then you could spend some time on the substantive, what you heard at the last presentation. The other business is gonna take about a minute and a half. It's just the notice of these other towns doing their thing.
Okay, let's uh, let's do the minutes. I...
It's the twenty-fifth?
Sorry, I'm, I'm looking back, 'cause there was actually one that... Um, okay, so starting with the...
Four twenty-four.
Do it, is it, so we've done... Oh, no, all right, I had the date wrong. Four twenty-five. I actually, like, months ago, had some comments about this. Um... Really? We haven't done the twenty-fifth, the twenty-fourth? Twenty-fourth. Um...
You didn't have a quorum at your May eighth meeting, so we didn't do this.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Um, uh... Okay. All right, I'm looking at the notes I wrote um a month, two months ago, and I can't make sense of them now.
So Dan, while Maggie's searching for comments, tip for a new planning commissioner? By the way, this is Dan Meyer, everyone, for the record.
Oh, my gosh, I forgot to, I'm so sorry at the beginning of the meeting, I meant to say something. I'm so sorry.
We all talked over when we were walking through the room.
That's right.
We did, we did.
Dan, I'm Joe. I introduced myself, sorry.
So, uh, tip for a new planning commissioner?
Yep.
The uh minutes, you know, are uh reviewed at the next meeting, and Kate does a great job, and why would we make any changes, but sometimes, you know, there's a change needed. The trick, just find your name in the minutes, and make sure anything Kate says you said, you actually said. And then if everybody does that, that's the only part you have to look at, is the part you said.
Yeah.
Or you don't say anything, and then you don't have to look.
Right, right.
And we should look at them at the start of the meeting.
We could start doing that. We tend to put it at the end of the meeting for Planning Commission and the beginning of the meeting at DRB, right?
Yeah, well, we usually don't do it, because we...
Because we get run out of time, yeah.
People are asleep.
We could, I could talk to the chair about restructuring our agendas, along those lines. Did you find your notes, Maggie?
I did, it was just one spot. Um, Kate, on, on the uh page four, do you have it in front of you for April twenty-fourth? So, page four, the second paragraph, beginning on the displayed... So, um, on the displayed Lot Fifteen Committee Report map. So I actually went to find that, and, and I was able to find it by um it, the official name is, is the Lot Fifteen Analysis Report. And I just wondered about um putting that, just so somebody could Google it, and would it be possible to do a link, or is that...
I have a note in my...
Did we already talk about this?
To go back to these minutes and attach the official map
Okay, yeah.
to the ones that talk about it, because there's so many cross-references to it.
This was specifically the one that showed those develop, showed different variants of, of development.
I can try to do that with the Lot Fifteen Report, but it's, it's, there's a lot to it, so I think it'd be better to just reference it and, and allow people to go find it.
Okay.
Once they got to the Lot Fifteen Report package, they have to find it in there. But get them, get them to...
Well, just tell them that that's where it can be found, yeah.
All right. Anyone else have something for the uh April twenty-fourth minutes? Uh, motion?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Of April twenty-fourth? Second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, um, minutes of the May eighth meeting, anyone have any comments?
Is that the one where we didn't have a quorum?
It is. So, most people are going to have nothing to say here. Um, for those who were here, um, motion to, motion?
Will we approve the minutes of May eighth?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, all right. Um...
Well, what would the majority move, statin?
Right, that doesn't happen often. Um, okay, May twenty-second meeting, um, minutes. Any changes? Okay, motion to approve?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of May twenty-second?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Fantastic. So, Alex, do you wanna talk about your uh, no, you don't, because you wanna have dinner. Oh, my gosh, the poor guy.
No, no, you have, you have some time left to talk about the presentations last, uh, at the last meeting, right?
All right.
Thoughts from those lessons learned?
I thought they were excellent in presenting so many different ways of looking at cities and towns and spaces for people. And one thing, it really left me with the question, why are we trying to force light industrial and retail into residential development areas? If we want the Heinsberg Village area to be the economical, whatever, what's the word I want? The business area of Heinsberg.
You mean?
Well, no, okay, Black Rock Development, they need to have a certain square footage for residential, for light industrial, for retail space. Why is that needed way out there if the center of the village is here, where most of the, the businesses are located? Is that necessary?
Yeah, I mean, that, that was one of my takeaways too, about um, where is it? Don't, yeah, don't worry about the function, whether it's residential or commercial. Decide on the form and, and um, and uh concentrate the, the retail and the commercial right in the, right in the village, for sure.
Well, it was provocative, and I think deserves a lot more conversation than we probably have tonight, but um, you know, I think in the last ten years, it's become um probably readily apparent to all of us, even those of us who aren't all that well-versed in shopping trends and stuff like that, and how people, you know, now trucks come to your door to deliver stuff oftentimes. So um, you know, what's happening to sort of active or interactive retail? And um, I, I definitely think, I think Faith was the one that said um, and it was a little cryptic, but I, I think, worry about the character of the streets um that are being made in your community, and how those streets fulfill the goals that you have um insofar as just shaping, you know, portions of neighborhoods and neighborhoods as a whole, and um uses will change over time. Worry about that aspect of um making our, our town as it enlarges. And not so much the specific use that we're mandating, and...
Yeah, same, same thirty percent commercial or, you know.
And it goes back, you know, to all of our conversations about mixed use, and you kind of throw your hands in the air and say, um, you know, where, where are we going? And how do we get there? And um, so it's, it's, it's interesting. I think your suggestion, Alex, to sort of go and look at some other communities um that maybe face some of the same challenges that we do. Maybe not Williston at this time, but um, you know, and see how life... They showed lots of images um about places that visually seem to feel good, uh certainly look good in many respects. And try to seek out some of those places and try to better understand why they seem to be working well, and how can we learn from that in some way, insofar as how we make our attempts.
Just to be clear, that was not my suggestion.
Well, whoever.
Julie Campoli's suggestion, she said, "You should go out and look and take notes and take pictures of what you like, and then come back and talk about it."
Live, walk, and work in Heinsberg.
Yeah.
But not worry about how much commercial and how much light industrial is involved? How would that work?
Well, I think the marketplace perhaps takes care of itself. It's been reshaping itself rather vigorously over the last decade or so.
Yeah, but developers, they see, there's room for light industrial, but developers see residential as a quick sale.
Well, right, and that's where they make the, make the move.
I mean, Heinsberg's a bedroom community.
Um, yeah, you keep saying that.
Yeah, it is.
I think Dennis is right. If, if you don't say something about a mix, you're gonna get purely residential.
Yeah.
And you're, and, and they're gonna max it out to what the, you know, what the bylaws allow.
And yet, and yet, Alex and I have recently been talking about um a local businessman who, who, within the year, is gonna need to move to a larger space, and there is no place in Heinsberg for him to move to. So, having light industrial, it's like, you know, there's, there's a need.
What's the percentage, Dennis, say, of um, what's it called now? Is it Heinsberg Village Phase Two? You know, it just...
Heinsberg Center Two.
Heinsberg Center.
And Kenny Drugs to the west.
So what's the percentage, say, in the second phase, Dennis, of um commercial or, yeah, I guess, commercial space to...
Non-residential space.
To, non-residential to residential space in the proposal for that development?
Should I really talk about it, since we're in the...
Factually only. They're, they're drafting a decision on that, on that project right now.
I, yeah.
But um...
I saw that, and I thought it'd be right on the tip of your tongue, so, you know.
Let me, let me tell you that, and then you don't have to.
All right, but I can, okay.
It's, it's uh seventy-seven residential units.
Yeah, including all those single-family houses at the back?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's um, oh boy, the number just slipped out of my head. I wanna say it's about eleven, eleven thousand square feet of commercial and light industrial, a mixture of spaces designed to be retailer office, and one, just one lot that is sort of set off to itself, that could be used for a, a light industrial or heavier commercial use.
What you use in Phase One is part of that calculation, though.
Okay.
They're using Heinsberg Center One eh, together with Heinsberg Center Two, but the numbers I just gave are just for...
Right, but I mean, there's a lot of mixed use in Phase One.
Right. Phase One included Kenny's and Bristol Bakery and...
The ratio is quite a bit different in Phase One, I imagine.
Yeah, because there's only, there are only eighteen residential units in Phase, in Heinsberg Center One. And the non-residential space is three, six, nine, twenty thousand square feet.
Okay.
So you said seventy-three housing units?
In Number Two.
And eleven thousand square feet of non-residential space.
Yeah.
So those seventy-three housing units are probably, on average, twelve hundred square feet?
It's actually probably not. Um, well, actually, on average, maybe it is, because...
With the single-family houses in the back.
Because they're like sixteen single-family homes, some of them on, on Creeksides uh Farmall Drive-sized lots, others on smaller lots. But he's, they've got a plan for a thirty-nine-unit apartment building, which will, will mostly be one and two bedroom units, so those are likely to be smaller. But maybe when you average it out with the houses that might be two thousand square feet, you might come to that uh number you just said, twelve hundred or a thousand. You're trying to get an idea of the square footage of residential versus the square footage of non-residential?
Yeah, it's something probably like...
Fifteen percent of it is um, and, and have we ever done any, like, in our discussions about mixed use? It really depends a little bit on where it is, obviously. You know, you're right, on One Sixteen, okay, that's one thing. Um, you start getting away from it, it's another.
Next to the playing fields. I mean, to answer the question, we tried and failed. And I think, I think when we tried, we, we did recognize exactly what you were speaking of, that, that you, you, you probably want to have a, a change as you go back from the One Sixteen road front, right, to, you know, the back of the, back of the property, right? With a recognition that, you know, businesses are gonna wanna be forward-facing, right? That's not to say a, a line of, you know, Kenny Drugs or whatever, that style, but, you know, businesses, probably, you know, multi-story, you know, first-story commercial, you know, or professional, second story, perhaps, either professional or residential, et cetera. And then working your way back, maybe more towards, you know, um, mix, multifamily, single-family sort of stuff.
Is, is that the way this proposal worked? I mean...
You've got like uh two, three, four, five, six, seven primary buildings, or larger buildings, you know, in Heinsbergville, Center Two. And were some of those commercial on the first floor, and some had no commercial on the first floor, I assume?
Uh... Yeah, one is a two thousand square feet uh office.
As you enter the project from the east, from where D Physical Therapy is, and you start to move in, uh, those buildings are commercial. And as you turn...
Straight commercial.
Straight commercial, yeah. And then as you turn the corner and go north to the connection to the, to the Black Rock Project, um, you hit that apartment building, which could potentially have some first-floor commercial. I think they're still toying with the idea. But, but then, everything else to the, to the west, until you reach the end of the development, is residential.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the commercial that is immediately near uh D Physical Therapy, is that single-story commercial?
Two-story.
So a second level of offices or professionals or, okay.
That's the, that's, that's the revision to their plan, which I don't fully understand. They had real success with commercial below and residential above, and they've changed it up in this realm, but interestingly, the, the Jan Blumstrom's property has a similar dichotomy, where it's the Village Northeast District, not the Village Northwest, so it's, it's not meant to have the full mix of uses that, that the west side of One Sixteen is supposed to have. But their master plan calls for the concentration of all that non-residential square footage, hundred and fifty thousand square feet of it there, in and around NRG on that southern part of the parcel. With the, when you come up over the hill, everything to the north is a hundred percent residential. So, it's a mixed-use project for sure, and, and it's got way more percentage of non-residential square footage than, you know, anything on the, on the Village Northwest side of the road. Um, but it's still separated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it, it, you know, just as a suggestion, and I'm not saying, hey, this is where we go, but um it impressed me a little bit. I was just in like a little design panel where people kind of advised communities. It was a architecturally sort of sponsored event, and all sorts of interesting little problems, from rehabilitation of the Opera House in Ennisburg to uh issues in the town of Virgens. So I happened to be on that panel. And Virgens, it's kind of interesting, their recently revised town plan, um, you know, on the surface, it looked pretty interesting. It'd be interesting for us, if we went to another community, uh, to see what kind of documentation or uh town plan documentation, I guess, they have. It might be interesting to review some of the salient parts of that before we go, depending on where we go. But like Heinsberg, with a major artery going right through the middle of it, you know, Virgens has been contending with that for...
Forever.
A long time. Uh, it somehow doesn't add up to quite what we have at certain times of the day, but probably a lot more in the way of heavy trucks uh going on, what is it, twenty-two A, right?
They're even talking about a bypass.
Well, they're not just talking about a bypass, they're doing a bypass, yes. And um sort of, it might be interesting, that's one possible place, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
But it's also really interesting from the standpoint of, you know, Virgens is maybe not even half as big as Heinsberg, in terms of total population. Now, that's a little... Now, that's a little misleading, because the.
I thought they were the smallest city.
They are. No, apparently now, Dennis, there's a smaller one. But I think it's like twenty-five hundred people, is when I looked it up. And part of that is just restrained, you know, geography or boundary lines or whatever, but. Then I, you get to looking at, you know, Bristol, Richmond, the sort of full extent of the kind of commercial hearts of these communities, and how extensive are these, you know, and I'm talking about two or three blocks in Virgens. Bristol's barely a block and a half.
But their, their retailer, their downtown area, downtown, it seems so fixed. For Virgens, it's like, it's not like it's going to expand, you know?
Well, it goes to the river, and it goes to about the Opera House, and that's about a three-block stretch.
Right.
But anyway.
With a satellite off by Route Seven, but.
True.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, there's, there's pitter-patter, and then a little explosion of stuff that, some of which failed.
For sure.
Up closer to, you know, country home products.
Anyway, sort of an interesting community for us to scrutinize perhaps a little more carefully, and I, I would say had done some fairly creative and proactive planning recently. Also, the configuration of the hinterland, so to speak. I, I read some comments, or Barb, you were talking about more curvaceous streets at one point, and it's interesting to see the backwaters of these communities, and how they're shaped, you know? And there is some commercial, as you get back into that, there's some, you know, restaurants along Green Street, some of these things, but you know, it's, it's where there's odd geography, geographical features, that the town starts to, you know, where Otter Creek, or in the case of Bristol, also has sort of a water course running through.
But otherwise, it's the grid.
Pretty much, pretty much the grid, yeah.
So let's.
Two thousand seventeen population in Virgens, twenty-five fifty-eight.
See, I told you, I must have worked.
So I'm, I'm going to say that we, we draw this to a close, and we'll continue at our next meeting. And I hope that we all get a chance to, to read the minutes, and sort of review, and, and maybe jot down our, our takeaways from those two talks. So that we can give, give Alex some kind of a framework, start talking about a framework about how, what we want to address, and how we're going to progress with that. Did you, Alex, want to talk about the other, other business?
Sure, so I, it was in your packet, it's on the Dropbox if you're interested. Adjacent communities are required to notify us when they update their town plan and have a hearing, or their regulations and have a hearing. And the town of Huntington is doing that with their town plan, they have a hearing on June twenty-fifth. If you're interested, check the Dropbox for more information. It's a, it's a big rewrite to their town plan. But I, I haven't looked at the guts of it to know if it's policy change, or just a prettier, better-done, you know, better-laid-out plan. And the town of St. George, our other neigh, one of our other neighbors is updating their land use regulations, and they're also having a hearing on June twenty-fifth. That, their regulation changes strictly about their flood hazard area. And incorporating some of the state recommendations for river corridor recognition and the like, which we will need to do at some point, too. It's on the list, but lower on the priority list here. So that's it for other business. My only other comment was, if you do want to do a field trip to a place like Virgens or whatever, the days are longest around the solstice, and your, your June twenty-sixth meeting is right after the solstice. But if you want to talk more, and then maybe do a field trip after you've had a chance to talk more, we can do that in July. And if you don't want to do a field trip, that's fine, too. It was just one of those suggestions that Julie Campoli had made, and anytime we can get out of this room, I think it's a good thing, so, but that's up to you.
That's our next meeting.
June twenty-sixth is your next meeting. So if you want to do that, I, I need some direction, at least from your chairperson, about organizing where we're going and that sort of thing. And if it's premature, you know, we could maybe do it in July.
Yeah, I know, I, I mean, it doesn't, as long as creamies are involved, basically, that's, that's the lowdown for me, so.
I was complimented.
Preferably maple.
I was complimented a year or a year and a half ago, when we adopted the new town plan, I think? Or was it the regulations? I, I forget what it was.
Did you sneak in a section about creamies?
Yeah, we had creamies in there, and, and one of, the Williston planner said, I think that's the first mention of creamies I've ever seen in a regulatory document.
It won't be the last, I bet, I bet.
I think speaking to cultural heritage is a really good idea, you know, when you're talking about the character of your town, so.
That's why we need mixed use. You can't expect somebody to walk, you know, to the other side of the village for a creamy.
Right, right. Especially a mixed creamy, right?
If Bristol had more mixed use, maybe they wouldn't be driving through our town and causing traffic jams. How many cars come through town from Bristol?
I don't know from Bristol specifically, but Moncton, yeah.
Blame Moncton.
One of the only, one of the only Addison County towns that are, that were growing rapidly, because they're all near us.
All bedroom communities.
All right, raise your hand if you want to go to Bristol. Raise your hand if you want to go to Virgens.
Well, you and I can figure that out, Maggie. I just, I just wanted to bring it up in case somebody did have a, like, hey, it's premature, or I don't want to do that, or I definitely want to do that, or. And then if people are okay, you and I can schedule.
Yeah. I mean, I like the idea of Middlebury, too, but it's just, I mean, it's too far, yeah, unfortunately.
May, or June twenty-sixth is fine with me, to go on a little road trip.
Fine with me.
How early would it be?
Well, that's the benefit of daylight. It's nine oh five now, and as you can see outside, there's still light in the sky, but it's pretty dark.
So we'd go at seven, then? Six.
Maybe six.
If, if people could do six earlier.
Can you do it?
Yeah.
Six thirty, even that would be a, if we, yeah, if we had a pretty good plan.
It's just hard for you because of work, right?
What if we didn't do it on a Wednesday night, we did it on a Saturday morning?
That's not going to happen.
I definitely can't do that.
Captive audience, we're all, I think they, we've got to get them when they're going to be here. Does six thirty, is that more doable for you, Joe? Obviously, it's later than six, but.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot more doable.
Would it be best if wherever we go, we met there?
That's an interesting idea. I was thinking we'd meet here in Carpool, but we could meet there and, and Carpool.
We might do a little bit of both.
Right, right. That might.
It might be easier for some people to just go wherever it is we're going.
Yeah, to eliminate the stop here, and well, we can arrange for that.
All right.
Okay, well, Maggie and I will work on it.
We will discuss.
June twenty-sixth, the dinner.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, excuse me.
Dinner, the planning commissioner and select board, the cooks hosting it at the United Church. The theme is Mexican.
Okay.
I'm going to do tamales.
I'm doing a big pot of chili.
Joe has offered to do desserts.
We know how many people.
Between forty and sixty.
I was going to do like quesadillas or something.
Ooh.
Those are very popular with the kids.
Then I'll just do a small number.
All right, we can email about that. All right, thank you, everybody.
Toodle-oo.